All right, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the City Council Land Use Committee for Wednesday, February 10th, 2021. We have one item to discuss this evening, ordinance 2102 to rezone 10.097 acres from planned unit development to mixed-use corridor regarding Bill C. Brown revocable trust petitioner. And I believe Mr. Ryan Robling is here from the Planning and Transportation Department to present this petition.
All right. See if I can get this to work, hang on, sorry.
We can see your screen.
Oh, yeah, sorry, no, it's on my end.
Okay.
Okay. The petition, this petition is for the property located at the intersection of East Third and State Road 446. The 10.097 acres is currently zoned within two PUDs, PUD 70, which is Century Village, and PUD 21, which is the Baker Stevens PUD. The portion of the PUDs that are within the highlighted in red are the ones that are being proposed to be rezoned. They are mostly undeveloped with the exception of some service-level parking areas. Surrounding uses include commercial and multifamily uses to the north, multifamily to the south. There's communication towers and hotel on the remaining portion of PUD 70 to the east and commercial area uses to the, on the remaining portion of PUD 21 to the west. So the petitioner is proposing to rezone, a zoning map amendment for the 10.097 acres from PUD to mixed-use corridor. Just a little bit of background on the site, Century Village was originally proposed in 1975 and was expanded in 2004. The original PUD allowed for a mixture of limited commercial uses. When the PUD was expanded in 2004, it allowed for a maximum of 50 upper-floor dwelling units. The Baker Stevens PUD was approved in 1984 and remained largely unchanged, allowing for limited commercial uses, including office and retail and a restaurant. The comprehensive plan has identified the petition site as two future land use areas. The comprehensive plan is aware that this may occur and allows for best-suited design to be identified and used during review of zoning map amendments. The department believes that due to the location along two major corridors, that the urban corridor best suits these parcels. The urban corridor has intense goals and features, including transforming urban corridor areas from strip retail to more urban and mixed-use designs, integrating multifamily residential uses into existing commercial areas. Uses should take advantage of the proximity to other land uses and urban surfaces. The area should incorporate a mixture of uses and seek to increase density or activity, excuse me. Buildings within the district should be developed with a minimal street setback, parking located behind buildings, and an emphasis on minimizing pedestrian obstacles. The area is suited for higher-density residential and commercial uses and should allow for taller building heights. So site plans are not required as part of zoning map amendments, however, the petitioner has included a conceptual site plan to give an idea of what the site could look like when it's proposed to be redeveloped in the future. Rezoning the site to MC would allow for any allowed uses in the MC district to be established as long as they meet district standards. The petitioner has shown in their conceptual site plan that it could support five total buildings, three residential, with one mixed use along Third on the north portion of the property there, and one self-service storage area on the south. You can see it there. The conceptual plan should provide a mixture of one and two bedroom units with a total of 164 units. Here's a conceptual elevation for the proposed multifamily building specifically along Third. And then here's the conceptual elevation for a self-service storage use, which would be on the southern portion. In conclusion, the portions of the PUD that were proposed to be rezoned were largely undeveloped since 1975, with the exception of some surface-level parking areas. The conceptual or comprehensive plan gives guidance that supports a mixture of uses, including higher-density multifamily uses along major corridors. The property fronts along two major corridors here at East Third and State Road 446. The MC district allows for a variety of commercial and residential uses and closely aligns with the goals of the urban corridor designation in the comprehensive plan. The MC district would allow for a variety of expanded uses, most notably multifamily along this heavily-traveled portion of the city. And just as a note, the department is beginning the process of updating the official zoning map and has plans to expire many of the city's existing PUDs, including these two, Baker Stevens and Century Village, and rezone to those to base zoning districts. So this petition is in line with the current plan set forth by the department. And then finally, the Plan Commission voted 9-0 to forward this petition to the common council with a favorable recommendation with one condition, which would seek to preserve the existing tree preservation on the area, on the property. There was that tree preservation area on the southern portion. We just want to make sure that they will continue to maintain that into the future. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Robling. Is there any representative of the petitioner who would like to make a statement? I see Mr. Carmen has his hand raised. And I think he should be able to speak now.
Okay. I was trying to get you on the chat to do that. I'm not sure I was doing it right, so thank you for seeing the hand up. Mike Carmen for the petitioner. The petitioner is Bill Brown. There's actually several different lots, because this is part of the Century Village PUD, which has been in place for a number of years. And so there are several petitioners listed, but those are all entities that are owned or controlled by Bill Brown, so really is Bill Brown is the petitioner. When we looked at this, while we were already contemplating pursuing a zoning change on this, and then the staff initiated this project to try to take a hard look at all the PUDs throughout the city and rezone all of them, this surfaced for us quickly to do that. And the MC zone really did seem to be the most appropriate of the new zone classifications on the UDO for this site, given its use, because the PUD is actually bigger than just these tractors seen on that diagram. This is the undeveloped portion of the PUD. The PUD includes Century Suites, two different office buildings, and then we're talking the primary, the likely primary use in this development area would be multifamily with some commercial, additional commercial space. And then the storage building is contemplated, as Ryan already highlighted. So we believe the MC zone is the most appropriate under the, what's available, that rezoning for the PUD to a fixed zone. We understand doing that and think that's appropriate here. While Ryan commented that site plans are not required for rezonings, we understand that. We also know that there's a tendency to want to see what likely would become or what's being contemplated with rezoning. So we offered up that, but at this stage, even that conceptual development plan or site plan is certainly subject to change, because there are some issues to be answered or resolved as part of the development of this, one of which would be a connection to the residential area to the west side. This conceptual plan you solved showed a connection there. Not certain that that's going to be appropriate. That's something to be discussed and looked at as part of the development plan or site plan. So there are those kind of issues, but it is the site plan, the conceptual, is a pretty good idea of what, something along that line is what I think the developer of this ground has in mind, particularly the storage building in the south. And we say to the south, the primary connection that will be to 446, not at Third Street. And so if that's a concern on how the traffic flow may work on this site, we certainly anticipate that any development would have a connection at Third Street. There'd be a line it with the current connection of Morningside Drive at Third Street, so you have a lined-up intersection, not offset, and carrying through to a connection to 446 on the east side, but more to the south end of the project on the east side. So there's, I'm not sure this, much more you can say about that on the petition, but certainly would try to answer questions if there are any.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carmen. Are there any questions either for Mr. Robling or for Mr. Carmen from committee members? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure. Thank you for the presentation and for the statement from petitioner. I was reviewing the mixed-use corridor zoning in the UDO ahead of time and some things in the comprehensive plan, and I didn't notice in, I couldn't find in the description of that zone that there are like required build-to lines or maximum setbacks, but it was kind of discussed in your presentation, Mr. Robling, that, you know, the effort to move towards a more urban mixed-use district here encourages that type of orientation with the street. Can you speak to that anymore about what's required in the, in the district?
Sure. Yeah, so the MC district has a front building setback minimum of 15 feet. So the building could be theoretically further back behind that, but it could be no further in front of that 15 feet. So it's a front setback rather than a build-to line in this district, but the parking will always be required to be 20 feet behind the primary structure's front building wall.
Do we feel like that requirement that the parking has to be behind the front building wall, more or less dictates that a building will be oriented sort of building first to the street and not parking lot in front? Is that?
Yes, that was definitely the intent.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Volan, please go ahead.
Thank you. First, a general question for Mr. Robling. Is it the department's intent to eliminate all PUDs from the city?
No, not all PUDs. There are ones that would otherwise have been called up to be expired in some fashion. Either they've been completed for some time.
Wait, called up to be expired?
So, yeah, the UDO sets forth rules to retire PUDs. They're not supposed to exist in perpetuity necessarily. That's not always the intent.
As a result of the new UDO?
No, that was in the prior UDO as well. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, it's, I think what's new for me is the idea that we're looking to actively retire PUDs. So how many PUDs does PUD expect to convert?
I don't have the exact number, but I believe there is 100 that are expected to be converted to base zoning districts.
And how many are there in the city?
Again, I think it's 120.
Wow.
I don't have the exact number in front of me, but.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Steve, can I, this is Jackie Scanlon, Development Services Manager. That is on the, if you go to the website for the plan, there is information there about the exact numbers, just FYI. And to, just to back up what Ryan's saying, has been in the code for a very long time, that planning transportation with councils should be reviewing PUDs as they're being built out and expiring them as necessary, you know, once they're built out, then putting them to a regular district?
But that has not been the practice.
Sure, well, I mean, what's new, sure, what's new for me is that there's an active policy to pursue this change, which was not the case a year or two ago, you know? So, I mean, we have, I have to admit that, you know, cities enforce their code with differing degrees of fervor, depending on what part of the code you're in. So it's good to know that it's the department's policy to begin actively converting PUDs if I have that, if I have that right.
Yeah, we would like to come up to some sort of base where those that have, should have been expired, you know, 20, 30 years ago, do have base districts instead.
Okay. So is the corner property here the actual corner where buildings and the parking lot currently are, is that also a PUD?
The, yes, that's P, to the north and east, that is the Century Village. That is currently a PUD. It's proposed to be a PUD after this petition. However, it is expected to be under review in the upcoming PUD expiration.
In other words, you expect to see the Century Village PUD itself converted to base zoning?
Yes.
Is it not owned by Mr. Brown?
The petitioner couldn't answer it better, but I do believe most of it is.
Not all of it, Steve. There's one use in there, an office building, that's the WBW radio stations on, company called Sound Management LLC, had the lease on a small piece that has the tower on it.
Right.
And we, I personally contacted them about joining in this PUD, this petition to rezone that part of the PUD to MC. They declined to participate because the difficulty is the tower is a permitted use in the PUD now.
Oh.
Is a conditional use in the MC zone, and they were not willing to voluntarily step up to rezone a permitted use to a conditional use, not knowing the impact in the future. Now, we do know that staff has already initiated and has already gone through some public comment opportunities, a rezone of the entirety of PUD to MC, which would include that area. And so that's something that's going to come up yet later, I would assume, about four months would be my guess on your timeframe, so.
Okay, I'm going to have more questions.
Right now, it's just on the undeveloped part of it.
You've hit on a subject that's very interesting to me, Mr. Carmen, so we'll take this up in a few minutes, but I'm glad you broached that subject. That's, I'll defer to for other questions, Madam Chair, but I've got more. Thank you.
I wanted to inquire whether the Environmental Commission reviewed this rezone, and if so, what their view of it is.
They didn't issue a memo. I do believe they reviewed it. They, I have a communication with Linda Thompson, Senior environmental planner, that they didn't have any major environmental issues at this stage. However, during the site plan review, I suspect they'll have further comment, but we did make sure to include the tree preservation agreement, so as just a step to guarantee that any potential issues came, you know, we didn't have any potential issues at this stage.
Okay, thank you. Well, my other question goes back to what Councilmember Volan raised, and that's that we had in our packet, a letter from Sound Management LLC with some concerns about their radio tower perhaps not being allowed. But, Mr. Carmen, do I understand correctly that where their tower and their office is is actually not part of this rezone?
Correct, but it is part of the rezone that the staff has initiated, that's going to go forward here over the next few months, but it's not part of this petition because they would have to join in on it, and then they were not willing to do so for the reasons as stated, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Volan, did you want to follow up on that topic?
I do. Got a couple of things here. Let's start with the tower. Mr. Robling, is there a particular reason that transmission tower cannot be part of this district that you want to rezone it to?
So it's not that they can't, they're just conditional. They're not by right permitted in the allowed use table. So they would be able to continue operating, they would just need conditional use approval. I believe the intent is they're just to keep uses like that away from traditionally commercial-driven corridors.
I mean, you understand why they're hesitant, right?
Yeah, of course.
Well, no, I mean, there's, it's a federal permit. You know, WFHB had the same problem with the tower on top of Fire Station Number One. Like, if any change to ownership happens there, it's almost impossible to relocate a tower. So I can see why they're very, very hesitant. We have to go through the FCC, and it's a years-long, it can be a years-long process. So, I mean, is there some way of, regardless of what the council decides overall or the Plan Commission on this, it doesn't make sense for the corner property and the property we're looking at today to not be unified. And if the tower is the reason why that's holding that up, you know, can an exception be granted in advance of a consideration? I mean, I don't know, I'm a little late to this party here. Do you see what I mean?
No, I do understand the question. I don't know that, unfortunately, I'm the best suited to answer that. If Jackie is still on the line, she might be better suited.
I am here. This might be a better question for Mike, and we can talk to him, not Mike Carmen, who I'm sure wants to answer, but Mike Rucker. That, I mean, you're talking about in a rezone, putting a, you know, including an extra allowance beyond what the zoning district allows. I don't know that that's possible.
It's unique to broadcast towers because.
Sure, well, I mean, so, yeah, you can, the council, of course, can initiate their own text amendments, and if you want to allow broadcast towers to be a permitted use in any zoning district, you know, then that's something that we can take up. It's conditional, so, and I believe also it doesn't have specific conditions, so it's just the general 11 or whatever that we have.
It's not that I want to set a precedent of adding new broadcast towers, but existing towers, they're almost like railroad tracks. They're, you know, very difficult to use.
So we can talk to Mr. Rucker about that tomorrow and have a more detailed answer for you when it comes back.
I would, I would like, I'm looking forward to that, yeah.
Okay, great.
Got more questions, but I'll defer. Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
I do have a related follow-up, which may or may not be answerable right now. And my sort of assumption was, because we have pre-existing non-conforming uses, such as duplexes, for instance, in currently, current residential zones that only have detached single-family, I just sort of assumed that if there were pre-existing non, potentially non-conforming uses, or in this case, conditional, that that wouldn't affect the current operation of a tower or the existence of the current tower, but really only if they were building a new tower, or I don't know, if replacing it would be the same thing, I guess. Can any staff member speak to how current existing uses may be treated if that use is conditional under, under, under the zone that it may have changed to? Does that make sense? Because it's not a new use, it is existing.
Yeah, sure, that makes sense. They would be allowed to continue, they would, yes, they would be lawful non-conforming. The issue would be if they're, they would need to modify it in some manner that triggered the conditional use to come back into play. But, you know, as it were right now, if they were to switch over, they would be permitted to continue in perpetuity.
Okay, so there's no, like, approval process or conditional process they'll have to go through simply by virtue of the zone changing? It would be if there's some sort of substantial modification in the future that requires, that triggers that, is that?
Exactly, yeah. Okay. There would have to be a triggering event.
Appreciate that. I look forward to more information about that next week or whenever as well. Thanks.
And I'd just like to remind everybody that the property that, where the tower is currently located is not part of this rezone petition. Additional questions? And then we also have an amendment we need to get to at some point. Councilmember Volan.
I mean, the reason I ask those questions is because it's relevant to the sketches that they presented as concepts for what could be done with the property. And one of the things that I see is sort of a relative lack of integration between the new proposal and the existing property. And just as an example, there's, on Third Street, there are a side-by-side entrances, although it does a, there's a proposed building that would go over the current entrance to the property. But what I don't see is the logical road connection to the new property. I don't know, I guess I wanted to hear Mr. Carmen or the petitioner's thoughts on if these were a unified parcel, how would these designs change?
The, as unified parcel, the design wouldn't change, but what is going to happen with the development, there's, is the existing entrance on the south side of Third Street into this property, that.
Yeah, okay.
That will move and get realigned with Morningside Drive, which connects from the north side, so that's to clean up the road connections.
Okay.
The transportation plan calls for, suggests through roads on this, north to south and east and west. The likely development will at least intentionally develop a through road north to south. It would not go all the way down to the Knight Ridge Manor Apartments, but it would come through and then it would elbow and go east to 446. There's the.
Pardon me just a second. Would it go, would that elbow happen north of the proposed storage building or south of it?
North of it.
Okay, keep going.
Go down the storage building and then take a left turn essentially to the, to the east to connect at 446. There, the developed, the existing developed property on the east side of this, where the Century Suites and the Bill C. Brown Associates office building is, there's an existing connection to 446 there, that there's a, is private road coming through. So one of the issues will be addressed in part of the development plan and possible plan amendment will be, does that become a dedicated public road coming through there, or does it remain a private road connection, and how's that tie into this development? So those, those issues will be addressed as part of development, it just wasn't part of the rezoning petition.
Okay.
But that's probably the most, the biggest question would be a connection to the west side. Is that appropriate or not? Does that neighborhood want a connection through their neighborhood or not? It's, the transportation plan would suggest there should be a connection there, but I think that warrants further consideration.
Mr. Robling or Ms. Scanlon, whoever can answer this, as a result of this change, can, can such connectivity as Mr. Carmen and I have been discussing be required as a part of the rezone?
I don't believe it can be required as part of the rezone, potentially in future site plan reviews and things like that, but I don't believe it could be. Ms. Scanlon.
Yeah, that might be a question actually for your counsel, for Stephen. I don't know, I get confused about what kind of conditions or reasonable conditions or whatever they're called. Counsel can put on different kinds of requests. So again, that, we'll add that to the list to ask Mr. Rucker, but maybe something we need to talk to, with counsel, counsel about, too.
Counsel, counsel, do you have a?
Yes, thank you. This is Stephen Lucas, counsel attorney. As part of a rezoning proposal, the owner of the parcel can either be required or allowed to make certain commitments regarding the use or development of that parcel, depending on the specifics of what you are wanting to require. It may take some further, further thinking and discussion before I can give you a definitive answer. I would also note that I'm sure, depending on the condition or commitment you're asking the, the landowner to make, that may affect whether they want to go forward with the rezone. But that's the best answer I can give you at the moment, and again, if you have a specific commitment in mind that you'd like the owner to make, I would suggest that you get in contact with, with council office.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah.
I had a question. I know that the, the drawings that we saw are just conceptual at this point, but I was wondering, the southern drive and access to 446, would that be a shared drive with the Knight Ridge Apartments?
If it would go that far south to connect there, there's, Knight Ridge has developed almost the property. There is a bit of, it was more like a service drive on the north side of its property, so one possibility would, would be to, that would be the connecting point, improve that road segment, and even the potential of it becoming a dedicated public road and connect to 446. But that's, is just one of the options, how to properly develop the property. We know, and I know that the, the likely developer is aware of the transportation plan, which calls for a road connecting from Third Street all the way down to there and then connecting over to 446. So their conceptual plan is calling for road connections there, but whether it's going to be fully developed as a public road or, or just an interior connecting road for the development is not yet determined, and that's going to be an issue to resolve with Planning Department as the development plan is put together.
Yes, I recall when we had a petition for development on this property a few years ago, and I think that that was actually a condition we placed before we voted down the whole thing, to share that drive so that there's less asphalt, less green space taken up. It just makes sense, rather than to have two parallel drives, you know, 10 feet apart. So I would hope that that, that is the way this will evolve. Are there other?
Oh, sorry, I was just going to add, there are, you know, driveway separation considerations in the UDO as well. I'm sure that this would probably easily meet those, but, you know, as you, as you said, we did discuss having them be shared in the last petition came through, which I think would be ideal, and so we would try to work with a development plan to do that, but otherwise they would have to meet the minimum separation requirements, which I think would probably here, it'd be somewhere between 50 and 150 feet would be my guess.
And that drive on the north side of Knight Ridge Apartments does connect to 446, right?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll watch for that with the site plan development. Are there other questions from? Are there other questions from council members? Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, could staff speak with any more specificity to the site plan review process vis-à-vis the transportation plan or roadway connections? Are, is that just a aspirational thing that you try to convince a site plan to incorporate? Or is it binding unless you say otherwise? And does staff make that decision or does it go to plan commissioner or anyone else for review? Walk me through that a little bit if you, if you don't mind.
Sure. So with a site plan, if, and with the rezon, they wouldn't be required to dedicate the right of way. It's with the subdivision that that trigger is, comes into play. So they are proposing to do some subdivisions here, which will trigger the need for them to become compliant with the two proposed plan roadways that Mr. Harmon talked about connecting Morningside and the property to the west. So those will come in, they, plan commission could, to rule on them and make a decision about those, but that they would be required with any subdivision.
And do you mean an anticipated future subdivision? Or are you considering, is this part of a subdivision since we're separating out portions of PUD? Like, is this the trigger?
No, this is not the trigger. They, the petitioner has a, a, a follow-up petition for both the site, future site plan and for a subdivision. So they've already started the process a little bit.
Okay, and since, since we're breaking up a PUD potentially, is it all one lot right now, like by, or two, I guess? So is the subdivision of lots a given at this point? Or is it possible that it could be developed without subdivision of lots?
This could be developed without a subdivision, if that's what they wanted to do. We had the, the five parcels are already existing and they already exist on their own.
Got it. Thanks.
Councilmember Volan.
Yeah, I guess I wanted to hear from the petitioners, like how they are thinking about what could be developed here compared to what was brought to us a couple of years ago, the Century Village proposal from two years ago. Is there anyone who can speak to that from the petitioners?
The, the proposal you're talking about a couple of years ago was a specific builder of student housing, university student housing, and that's the project you had. This developer does not build student housing. It is multifamily, but that's why it's a one and two bedroom. It's not, it's not, that's just not the business we're in. This developer builds hotels and multifamily structures, commercial buildings, and they've not been a student housing developer. And that's not the plan for this. Now, we know that's virtually impossible to guarantee. There wouldn't be some students there. This is not possible anyplace in the city to do that, but it's certainly not going to be designed for that, for that market. So there's not. What he had before had planned bus transportation for students into the campus to help lure them to come out there. None of those are part of this. That was Evergreen, I think, was the development, the potential development there. And, and that's, that's just not on the table with this development.
The, I do see the, the, one of the holdovers from that design was the, the alignment with Morningside Drive, the continuation of it south into the project, which encourages me. I do see a, a lot of perpendicular parking here though. And I wonder how you, you came to sketch that, that way. Like, is there, was there no way to put parking around the storage building so that you could make parallels, some more parallel or angled parking?
In all honesty, there, there was not that much attention and effort put into the site plan because it's tended to just be conceptual. There was no significant effort to make it code compliant or to, to deal with some of those issues. It was, it just, it's too preliminary for that detail. So, so I can tell you that's not going to be done, but it just, there was no effort to try to do that. Just like the parking space, you count those, you don't see, find your, your required parking, the tree islands every 15 spaces or whatever. There, there are obviously code issues that have not been addressed in that.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I'm also curious now as to, I mean, the thing is that while the corner property, which is apparently part of the PUD, but it's not a part of this proposal, is related. I mean, the corner of Third and 446 is crying for development. And I wonder if there's any kind of limitations there or how would integrate with the petitioner's thinking, you know, to, because clearly you're looking at some building forward designs against Third Street. But if this other property, I don't know, maybe it's premature to think about. I just.
And let me, let me clarify one thing. I didn't say this before because I'm trying to not open up other canes of worms and, and get sidetracked on this. The whole PUD minus the lots attributed to the radio station, the office building, which is on a standalone lot and the small pieces leased for the tower use.
Where, where is that on the?
PUD, yes. Go ahead. Sorry.
Well, where is that on the map? I'm trying to, I'm looking at the map here. I'm trying to see where exactly.
Where, where's?
That tower stands.
I'm sorry. The, finding, if she's going to show a map.
I mean, I see, I have a map in front of me. I just, can you describe where the tower is?
Right in the corner, do you see where it takes the, the yellow line cornered a little bit right, just to the right of that? The tower's right there in the corner where just off the, the D off the PUD label. Right in that corner, just southeast of that, the D and PUD.
I'm looking at a different map than you are.
Okay, I was looking at the one that's on the screen. I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, I'll, I'll pull that up.
You can see the outline of it right there. See that tiny little outline of a?
Oh, yes, I do. Very good.
That's the tower.
Yeah, understood.
And the office building is the north office building up just on south of Third Street, straight north of that. It's the furthest north, but just south of Third Street. And then there's a buried utility line in Neesman that connects the office building back to the tower. But the, every, this whole PUD, all that up in the corner that you, I know you're concerned about is not being addressed. This, in all honesty, had intended for all this PUD minus this, the radio station use, the tower and then the office building be part of this petition. And leaving out the office building and that, that tower, it was interpreted to be leaving out the rest of the PUD not to be part of this petition. Once we, that was discovered, we're so far into this process and knowing the staff has already initiated as part of the other, the rest of the PUD rezoning issue, that the whole, the rest of the PUD be rezoned to MC, consistent with what we're talking about now, elected to move forward on this because what we're really dealing with tonight is the undeveloped portion of it. We fully expect that through the staff's petition that we come to you later this year, that the rest of the PUD will also be rezoned to MC.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that, that background into your guys' thinking.
All right, so we have about 22 minutes left. And I do want to give the public an opportunity to weigh in. But first, there's a, an amendment. Would, Mr. Volan, your name is on the amendment. Would you like to present that?
I'd like to move Amendment One for, for consideration.
Second.
Go ahead, Mr. Volan, and explain your amendment to us.
Okay, this is a, I got to find it on my screen here. This is, first of all, it revises the title to include the address of the properties in question, which is something that I'm accustomed to seeing in any land use request is what addresses being considered. So that does that. And this also corrects a portion of Section 1 to more accurately identify the properties that would be affected, which include the two parcels that don't have addresses because they're sort of buried in the, in the deep of, of these properties. So it also corrects the street address of parcel one, which was mistakenly put down as 310 instead of 300, South State Road 446. So it's pretty much housekeeping. But I'm also pretty sure that it meets with the satisfaction of petitioner and staff as well.
All right, thank you. Mr. Robling, is the staff in agreement with this amendment?
Yeah, 100%. It was just, as Mr. Carmen kind of talked about, it was confusion on exactly the title or addresses of parcels. So this just cleans that up.
Very good. Are there any questions on this amendment? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the public on the amendment. So this is only about the amendment that corrects an address, a couple of addresses and expands the title of the ordinance. If there's anybody in the public who would like to speak to the amendment, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or send a chat to the meeting host. Mr. Lucas, are you seeing anybody who would like to comment on the amendment?
No.
All right. Let's go back to the committee on the amendment. Does anybody want to move a due pass on that?
Move due pass on Amendment One.
Second. All right, so let's take a straw poll vote on the due pass recommendation. Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, so we're back to the ordinance as amended. And I think it's time to go to the public for comment on the rezon petition for part of Century Village and the Baker Stevens PUD to be rezoned to mixed-use corridor. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this petition? Please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat to the meeting host. Mr. Lucas, are there any takers?
Not that I see. We did have one message come in over chat. I don't, we have individuals still in the meeting and I don't see any additional requests.
Okay, we'll give it just another moment here. Anybody want to comment on this proposed rezon? All right, well, seeing none, we'll go back to committee members for any comments. Councilmember Flaherty.
Actually, I have another question, if that's.
Sure, go ahead.
I realize in our, my, my most recent questions to Mr. Robling, we got a little bit, I got a little bit lost in the discussion of whether a subdivision of the property was expected or not. And maybe didn't fully digest your answer with regard to connectivity and the transportation plan. So if a subdivision does happen, is it automatic and required that the connections laid out in the transportation plan will be met? Or, or again, is that, can, cannot be overridden by plan commission? Or is it, you know, some sort of exception needs to be applied for? Or is it more of a back and forth negotiation about what's feasible? Not, not completely clear on that process still.
Sure. So yes, with a subdivision, it is required. I do believe you could seek a deviation or variance from that. However, by default, it's, it's required if it's on the transportation plan with a subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'll add, it would be very, very unlikely that they would, if it's even possible, like Ryan's saying, is, you know, we do allow, there are processes for subdivision control waivers. But I think that would be difficult if possible.
Thanks. Well, then I'd like to follow up with Mr. Carmen. Is it, do you, do you know whether the petitioner plans to subdivide, plans to pursue subdivision of the properties?
I do not believe the petitioner plans to subdivide this property, the development property. What Ryan was referring to is that Mr. Brown, who owns the other parcels in this PUD that are going to be, come up next with the staff's petition, we've been looking at a replat of that, amended plat on that. And that's what Ryan was talking about. It's already underway. There's been a preliminary plat prepared that's looking at adjusting a couple of lot lines. And that would have the same impact as a new subdivision plat, which is what Ryan's referring to about triggering road requirements. That has not been done yet, but that's, that's the other petition that's started, but has not gone through yet.
Okay, so that's for the property that's on, on the corner of 446 and East Third. That's not part of this.
Wait, just, oh, sorry, just to clarify, Mike, you said the other preliminary plat? I mean, it's to be done as a preliminary plat, correct?
I, Jackie, I don't recall now whether there's a preliminary plat or a final plat. But because it's just moving, adjusting a couple of lot lines.
Oh, got it. It's existing. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
So then a follow-up from Mr. Robling. So would that, since it's just the corner property then, where a subdivision would be pursued or equivalent of a subdivision, would the connectivity to the west that is shown in the transportation plan be required to be enacted?
Yeah, with the, the plan that I've seen so far, it would be because it actually does touch in that area. It's not on these particular parcels, but the area is included in the transportation plan. So they would be included.
Okay, but then the, the, it would only, would it only impact the roads that are in the Century Village PUD that's not part of this rezon?
The, what was shown would impact all of them, both the north-south road and the east-west road, the way that they had, had shown it. So to answer your question, yes, the, the plan would be required to, transportation plan would be required to be met.
Okay, that's good news. Any other questions or we can move to comments from committee members? Comments? Councilmember Volan?
I'll defer to Mr. Flaherty.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, thanks. Much, I think we've seen a few rezons recently that are fairly in line with what's kind of coming down the pike anyway, with the UDO proposed map, both the comprehensive plan, land use section that establishes this as primarily urban corridor, as well as the, the proposed UDO map update that labels this as MC, I think, point in this direction. I appreciate the continued preservation of the trees on the site and that our plans and processes will, will help to ensure connectivity as this gets developed, as well as the sort of street orientation of, of the buildings to, to help this move into a more mixed-use and urban kind of feel. So that all sounds good to me. I appreciate the presentation and the answers to questions tonight. I'm happy to consider a due pass recommendation for the council this evening if my colleagues are not opposed. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'm just going to interject because what I would say is exactly what Councilmember Flaherty said. So I, I won't repeat it. Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, well, I, I think this is interesting. Yeah, I can't help but compare it to what came before us two years ago, since it's, it was a subject of much contention. But then it was proposing a much heavier use of the property than what's being discussed here. You know, just the idea that it's one and two-bedroom units is a far cry from the student housing that was proposed before. On the other hand, the student housing did provide quite a bit of benefit, not the least of which was a bus route, you know, like funding for bus service through here and connectivity within the site. I know that the, the place where the pond is in the map is there because it's relatively undevelopable. That's why there's never been any proposed buildings for that corner. So I mean, I'm encouraged by the relative reduction in density, even though I recognize that this is, I, I agree with the characterization of it as an urban corridor. I, you know, I am sort of bothered by the lack of clarity about how this will integrate with the other site. I mean, I can't believe that this site would develop in such a way and the corner site not also be developed, especially the, the land right along the actual corner of 446 and Third Street. So like, I'm very interested in the petitioner's plans for, I mean, I think an integrated develop will be better than developing these two parts separately. So, you know, I'd like to know more about that. I'd like some more clarity about. I'd like some more clarity about, you know, what and when any requirements can be made for connectivity. I mean, I don't want to see nothing but parking lots through here. I'd like them to be real roads going through here and that that be required. It's not asking a lot of the petitioner, but because this isn't a PUD, we no longer have the ability to require such things. And so I'm, I'm a bit ambivalent about passing it on until I know more. But I'm not sure that it's something we couldn't find out. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm reluctant to pass it on, but I'm not sure. I, I think it may be moved, I just don't know. I just don't know. So I, I have to just express my ambivalence here. Like I'm generally speaking, happy to see that this will be developed and will be developed in a way that is sort of consistent with today's standards, that it'll be denser and in particular that it will face Third Street. But I think that the interior of the project makes as much difference as the Third Street frontage and that I just don't want to see another parking lot happy housing complex, no matter how much less intensive the, the development is. So I just have to say I'm ambivalent. And I, you know, I wish we had more answers and I don't know what we should do about it, so.
All right, well, I will just add that I wish our society had less need for self-storage because I think we accumulate too much junk that we don't need. But that's just tangential. I've already agreed on this petition with what council member Flaherty said, the environmental protection for the trees and the, the building forward design council member Volan also mentioned. And of course, we do want to see the connectivity that is in our transportation plan enacted through the course of development in this area. So I'm ready for a recommendation?
Move do pass.
I, I just want to say I'm not going to oppose moving it to the full council. I would, it's against my better judgment, but with Councilor Rosenberg not being here, I'm not going to oppose it. I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion, a do pass motion and a second. Council member Volan?
Yes.
Council member Flaherty?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So we will send this ordinance 2102 back to the full council with do pass recommendation of three zero. And thank you everybody for your time this evening. And yes, council member Volan?
I was just going to say, I would ask Mr. Carmen if I can speak with him privately after this meeting along with the, our council, Mr. Lucas.
All right, you can arrange that. All right, so we do have on the same Zoom link, we have, I believe, the administration committee meeting at 6:30 in about six minutes. But I think that's it for land use committee tonight. We'll, of course, also pass forward the amendment.